Good evening. Today is November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council that is taking place before our regular meeting. And in today's, in today's special meeting, we have two items. They're both study session items. The first one is an housing element update for sites inventorying and upcoming community engagement. So, Mr. Interim City Manager, would you like to introduce this item for the presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, very good. Well, thank you, Madam City Clerk. I neglected roll call. Would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. And everything I just said moved forward to item number one. Mr. City Manager Larson, take it away.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council for adding a long study session before your regular meeting. But these are both important items that the council has discussed before. When you had your prior launch of the housing element, there were questions from the council regarding the site inventory and the community engagement process. So when given the council also requested periodic updates on the housing element, we thought we'd bring those two items back to you for a study session. No formal action is required on this except for your understanding, community notification, and any direction you want to provide. Mr. Ben Fu, the Director of Community Development, will introduce that item more thoroughly. And then this item will be followed by consideration of the Climate Action Plan update. And we wanted to present the draft measures to you before we go on to the intensive data gathering and writing. But these measures have come from the public outreach to date. And our Sustainability Manager, Andre DeVort, will present that item following the housing element. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can go straight to Ben and then Andre afterwards.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Larson. Director Fu, I believe that you are presenting the study session item for item number one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Larson, for the introduction. Actually, with me today, we have our consultant as well, Andy Flower from EMC Consulting Group. I believe you had the pleasure of meeting them at the last meeting. So they'll be joined by Andy as well as his colleague, David Masterson. We also have some planners on hand as well, offering some support. But yeah, Mr. Larson is correct. We're bringing it back at this round of study session to discuss sites inventory as relates to housing element update, talk about the community engagement, look at scheduling and next steps, and of course, receive feedback from council as we continue to move forward. With that, I won't take up much more time. We think, I think we have maybe about nine, ten slides or so. We'll try to run through that fairly quick and have some time for council and the public for questions and feedback. So with that, I'll hand off to Andy. Andy?
Thank you, Director Fu. Thank you, Mayor Paul and council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you. And I will begin my presentation. As Director Fu mentioned, we have about ten slides. I'll go through them quickly. And both myself and David Mason-Ton, we're both here, available for questions and to be responsive to any public comments. So today, we're providing a bit of an update for the sites inventory and a preview for the upcoming community engagement process we have in store for the community. Our presentation tonight, we'll have a brief background and discussion about sites inventory. We'll discuss the community engagement that's coming forward, next steps, and we'll invite council feedback. Background for sites inventory, we want to be very clear that sites that are suitable for residential development, if zoned appropriately and available for residential use during the planning period, we will pursue that. If there are not enough existing sites to accommodate the RENA or the regional housing needs allocation for each income category, then the city must identify additional sites. And we want to bring it to your attention that rezoning and/or adopting programs and policies may be necessary to accommodate the full amount of housing needs allocated to the RENA. And just to give a bit of background and context for the numbers of units in each income category that are required for Cupertino, as compared with Santa Clara County and Bay Area, we can see that the total for Cupertino is four thousand five hundred eighty-eight. For the whole of Santa Clara County, it's one hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-seven. And for the entire Bay Area, four hundred forty-one thousand one hundred seventy-six. They're fairly evenly distributed among each of the income categories, where twenty-six percent of the units will be required to be very low income, fifteen percent low income for Cupertino, seventeen percent or seven hundred fifty-five units moderate income, and almost two thousand, at forty-three percent, will be required to be above moderate income. For the sites inventory process, we will be following HCD guidance and adhering to the numerous new laws governing the sites inventory process. We'd be happy to provide you with memo if you'd like to understand what all of that would mean. And this is just a brief listing of the steps in which we will incur going forward. We'll be identifying the sites. We'll be working closely with staff. We'll be looking at sites that have been used in the last round and maybe even the last two rounds. We'll be looking specifically for sites to accommodate low and very low income RENA. We'll be recognizing capacity analysis. And when we look at non-vacant sites, we will be certain to be addressing any possibilities for displacement. In the end, we'll be following through with our determination of adequate sites so that we can meet all of HCD's requirements for certification. Ways to participate. We're very excited about this. We're wanting people to know that they can participate in many different ways. We'll be launching, we'll have a soft launch of our website next week, and we'll be launching it in five different languages. And that was listed in the meeting materials this evening, but I'd be happy to repeat those if there's a question. Within the website, there'll be several different ways to interact. We want to make it very clear that the city of Cupertino is right on time as a community. There's an opening right now for the kinds of tools and apps that are available for direct democracy to take place. And with AB six eighty-six, it couldn't be more important than it is right now. And we want to make it clear also, for those who wish to interact, there will be ways that you can get very informed and have a very deep dive in our process. And there are also opportunities for people to use their valuable local knowledge and contribute in a meaningful way. We'll have community workshops, and we have one coming up on December ninth. And we will also be inviting stakeholder representation. More on that in just a little bit. This may feel fast for us to beginning, to begin talking about sites immediately. And the reason why we need to jump right into sites before really discussing a lot of different policy opportunities is because we need to come to a sequoia decision. We need to understand what our project description is according to what we may be affecting on the ground in order to understand the locations in which the community and the council determines is the appropriate location for future housing in Cupertino. So we're beginning with looking at site options. And our goal is by February to have an idea for which route for sequoia, whether an EIR, an environmental impact report, will be required or not. And if so, our team is ready and able to prepare that before the deadline of next year when the certification deadline occurs with HCD. So, next steps. We will be working closely with staff with a list of potentially eligible property owners, and we'll be sure to communicate out to them throughout this process. There may also be a heart of the city specific plan update, and I'll let Director Fu speak a little more about that if there are questions. The December ninth virtual workshop, community workshop, we also have, in that morning, we have a Housing Commission meeting, which is a public meeting. And I believe that's at nine thirty, but we can confirm that with you. And the stakeholder ad hoc group selection. We mentioned a few different variety of stakeholders that we would like to invite. We want to make it clear that we want this to be a very open and diverse recruitment. We received some public comments, and we would also wish to broaden the recruitment to older adults, those who have lived an unhoused experience, nonprofit home builders, and And we can also talk a little bit more about what the role of the stakeholder group. We want to make sure that we have representation as we discuss the different steps throughout the process of the housing element development. And what is addressed with the stakeholder group will then filter up through the Housing Commission, the Planning Commission, and through with council, with updates along the way with council regularly. So at the December ninth community workshop, from seven to nine, this is just a brief description of what we will be bringing to that workshop. We will give a presentation to talk a little bit about the housing element update process to give context. We'll help folks understand why now, why we're discussing the sites immediately in our, in our update process. And we'll begin a conversation about the distribution for future housing. And you may have received a preview map. We'll be using a mapping exercise. And what we've done is we've discovered a way in working through GIS team and using this shapefiles that are available to delineate between special areas and neighborhood areas so that as a, as a whole, we're able to cover the entire city. And we can, through this mapping exercise, begin to understand where preferences may occur as patterns for where future housing may be located. So council feedback, we are open and interested in hearing any requested changes you may have if you've had an opportunity to take a look at that preview link. And we are also open and inviting you to share with us any considerations for future iterative mapping exercises. And that concludes my presentation.
Andy, before we go to council questions and feedback, I'm going to go to members of the public if anyone has any comments. And I just want to remind everyone that we actually do have two study session items here. And so I'm going to try to conclude this one by six o'clock to give everyone an expectation of time. I do see one hand raised from the public, and that is from Jennifer Griffin. And I'll remind all members of the public that you'll need to have your comments concluded by the time the first person gets on speaking. You'll have three minutes. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thanks for having this study session. And you know, thank you to the consultants. You all are doing a fantastic job. This is a very, very controversial, stressful. Because of the housing bills, it has put a great deal of controversy, et cetera, et cetera, into this whole process. And you know, the staff and everyone and the consultant, you know, you all have to navigate through this. So my kudos for doing a good job. So I'll start out and I'll say, you know, when we have RENA numbers of four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight, that is one-tenth the population of Cupertino. And I, I will say initially, I have found, I find complete fault with the RENA numbers, as I have said before. I'm not the only person who has this concern. So when we're planning for one, one-tenth more of the population of Cupertino, it's a big deal. And I would, as we start out in this journey, I just, my first question was, I would like someone for once to tell me, I have asked this question repeatedly for the last probably ten years, when we have sites that are identified and go into the housing element, at what time are the sites actually physically rezoned legally? And does that rezoning, is that retained on the site from the, from that point? When are they legally by the assessors? When are they legally, when is that upzoning happening to them? How long does it stay on there? If the site falls out or the owner withdraws it, let's say, six months down the line, does that zoning sit on the site forever? No one has ever explained that to me, and I would really like it to be answered as we go into this because SB nine and ten and the housing bills has pushed this question. We need to know that because any site that is rezoned legally at that point, the owner is cooping, recouping much, much more money. So in that situation, I would like to make sure that we, we don't lose all the gas stations, we don't lose all the grocery stores. And I sent you all an email about Heart of the City. I want to make sure we don't do anything to jeopardize that. How much more time do I have or am I done?
That is your time, Jennifer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And our meaning hands are from Peggy Griffin, Bruce Nagel, Scott Connolly, and Ryan O'Connell. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, City Council and staff, and thank you for this presentation. A couple things. One, I think he mentioned that, I'm sorry, I missed your name, but you mentioned that you could provide a memo to the council. I think it was on adequate sites or selecting them. I think that would be a really good idea. Also, stakeholder has a really, leaves a bad taste from past history. So I would like to see on the website a list of the stakeholders and a couple ones that I, I would like, I liked some of the ones that you added that weren't there before. People who rent, condo owners, small businesses, local college students, teachers from local schools, not just CUSD, but the ones that are here in Cupertino, emergency workers like fire and ambulance, the hospital like Kaiser nearby, workers that work on, in all our businesses, the restaurant, the waitresses and waiters and retail servers, grocery store people, and the elderly, and also the elderly like in homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Next, we have Bruce Nagel. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the fact that Cupertino has been a leader in many of the things going forward. And one of the things that I want to ensure is the fact that when we've done a lot of work to make our buildings more sustainable, we've gone through and created reach codes, and we've done things like getting one hundred percent clean electricity through Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And there'll be more of these to come. My concern is just to ensure that as we're going through this process, that we continue the work to make sure that these buildings are sustainable and that they have the latest in electric appliances so that we won't be leaving them behind. What you've talked about, the last person that spoke, was a lot of the kinds of people that are the bedrock of the community, and they should have the same opportunity to have safe and efficient housing as other people do. So whatever you can do to make sure that that's part of the process, I think will be most helpful. And it continues to evolve over time because the fact that we need to get to, by twenty-fifth, twenty forty-five, we need to be at carbon neutral. And we're not going to get there unless we really pitch in and move it forward. So we know, when we have an opportunity for new housing, to move it to that, we need to take it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Scott Connolly. Scott, if you can hear this, you'll need to unmute yourself to be heard.
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll be really quick. I just had two, two quick questions off the top of my head. And I know this is, I'm just posing the question. It's not a question and answer forum, but I'm curious, you know, as all, all the cities in the surrounding area, you know, are challenged to come up and meet their RENA numbers, is there ever an opportunity in this process where a small city like Cupertino that has an extraordinary RENA requirement for this next cycle, where the city ever says, you know, state, we can't get there, and the city doesn't comply with it? And I'd be curious as to, if that's an option or if there are ramifications for the city in doing that relative to state control over future land planning in the city? And then my second question would be, relative to the current RENA number that the city's trying to meet, is there an estimate of how much the city thinks that any potential development in Valco will eat into that current number? Appreciate the opportunity to speak, and everybody's doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Thanks very much. Our next and final speaker is Ryan O'Connell. Welcome, Ryan.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Last cycle, Cupertino City Council explained on camera that they were intentionally choosing sites that would not get developed, and they described it as cheating and effective. And I look forward to this cycle being really different and working closely with the city to put in a good faith effort to provide housing sites that'll get developed in a responsible way that benefits the community. And yeah, I appreciate the transparency around the process and that this year it's going to be a lot different. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And we'll bring it back to council for any follow-up questions or comments. I'll remind everyone that we have roughly twenty minutes left, and so I can divvy up the time in approximate four-minute increments if we'd like. Would anyone like to ask questions or provide comments first from council? And in the absence of that, then perhaps, you know, some follow-ups, because we do have a couple of minutes over twenty, based upon the public commentary. I believe Jennifer Griffin asked a question, and a couple of questions were asked by, I believe it was Scott Connolly. And did anyone want to follow up on their questions? I believe Jennifer's question was about zoning and Scott's question, at least one, well, one of the questions was about what happens if we, in good faith, feel like we're not, you know, getting to compliance, you know, can we have a communication with the state? And then the second one, I believe, had to do with the Valco units. I don't see anyone from our city staff or, oh, Andy, your hand is raised. Did you want to speak to any of those questions?
Happy to give it a go. And, okay. So I, the first thing I'd like to make clear is that it is a, we're creating capacity. And I'm not sure that, well, okay. And so with the, with Jennifer Griffin's comment, as far as rezoning, we do have up to three years to rezone, but there are consequences if you don't rezone in tandem with the housing element update process. So hearing that question helps me understand how to better prepare for the community workshop so we can go into more detail for things like that when we have our breakout rooms. There was a question that I want to make sure I address, how long the zoning remains? Basically, once zoning is changed, it's, it's, it's actually, you can't downzone now in the state of California. So if something has been upzoned, you really, please, Mr. Jensen, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the law is that in general, it's, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to do that.
You can't have a net downzoning. So any reduction in density on one parcel needs to be offset by an increase elsewhere. You know, and so, so yeah, and generally that, you know, that, so you'd have to find the density somewhere else. So yeah, and just like any other zoning change, it would require a subsequent ordinance of council to undo it. And so, so it remains in place absent that.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Let's go on to the council feedback and questions at this point, since we are at the, you know, five forty point. So I'll go ahead and carve out a few minutes, three minutes each for council members, and then, time allowing, you know, have a one minute wrap-up for comments. So Councilmember Willie, your hand's raised first, followed by Councilmember Way, Vice Mayor Chow, and Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, so I'll start with a question. So, Andy, can you tell us, you know, what other communities, hopefully cities, hopefully neighboring ones, are you also helping with this process so that we can kind of see the landscape?
Certainly. We have three cities that we're, three communities we're working with in Santa Clara. So we're also working with Los Gatos and Monticello. And in the county of Marin, we're working with Larkspur, Velvadere, and Fairfax.
Great. Next question or comment, so we received an email from Valley at Home, and they actually put a lot of information into their, of November eighth, about all these Santa Clara County communities that are working on this RENA process. So you know, they actually really have a lot of information in there. Campbell, Gilroy, Los Aljos, Umptee Umpt. I'd like to suggest that we have somebody on staff that is kind of connecting the dots between our community and the surrounding community so that we're learning from them, they're learning from us. If they, you know, if they're able to figure out a way to integrate more housing into mixed-use development or things of that nature, I think it would be unfortunate if, if we're all working in our own silo. So that's kind of a comment. And next one, on the housing sites, while it may be a little bit early, is the current Simian parcel, you know, back at the very behind Valco included, the one that Apple is proposing for below market with Santa Clara County, is that being included?
That certainly, Councilmember, that certainly can be a site to be in a discussion.
Yeah, I would definitely think that needs to be up there, being that it is a below-market rate project. Hopefully, we make it come to fruition. So I'll leave it with that for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Right around twenty seconds left of your three minutes. And now we're going to go to Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So just a couple of real quick comments. For the stakeholders, I know we have included a lot of categories, and we really don't want to expand it too big, but maybe some, some groups can be represented, some persons be representing both groups. I would like to see if, have we considered the face groups? They are a pretty big population in our community, and I know face groups usually actually owns land. So I wonder if we could approach them too. And also, our major employee, Apple, I think they, or their employees maybe should be represented. And I want to agree with Councilmember Willie that the Simian property should be included for, you know, explore future possibilities. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Way. Less than a minute. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi, I would appreciate the memo on the site selection process. And first, I'd like to respond to a public comment about the decisions by the previous council. The previous council actually identified five housing element sites to accommodate fourteen hundred units with only a thousand unit allocation. All five sites were approved by the council. The Valco site has faced the community resistance due to a large allocation of two million square feet of office space. But the other four projects did not receive community resistance. So Cupertino residents as a whole are welcoming to quality residential projects. This should be clarified. And I would have a question. I understand under the current consultant contract, it covers only eleven public meetings and two community meetings. I would like both of the community meetings to be either in person I would like both of the community meetings to be either in-person or hybrid, because many of our communities, especially on those who cannot, who, who have challenges access to digital technology, they appreciate the person-to-person contact. So could, would the December 9th meeting be in-person? And I have requested in the last meeting, and again this Sunday, that we should have a schedule of all the public meetings, even its tentative date. So we have an idea what will be covered in each of these meetings. And, but I have now received that and I still don't understand how the December 9th meeting, the content will be different from today. Since we have a limited number of meetings, I want to be sure that we use each of them efficiently for community engagement. And as for stakeholder group, I suggest we have one group with home builders, with a potential housing builder and the owner, property owner of potential sites, including face groups. Second group could be potential new residents, seniors, renters, unhoused, Deans, students, current workers, including teachers, or any other group is such as extremely low-income, developmentally disabled. The third group would be existing residents, homeowners group, neighborhood group, and community group. So I thought these three groups might make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Right around the 25-second mark left of your three minutes. And now we have councilmember Moore.
Hey, thank you. So I have one question regarding the EIR and our contract with EMC, because there was some mention about being ready and able to do the, do an EIR. So maybe this is a question for Chris. Is, was the EIR, are you aware, is the EIR part of our contract? And the reason why I'm concerned about that is looking at 2.84.080 Duties, Powers, and Responsibilities of the Environmental Review Committee. It looks like it would need to go through the ERC at some point if this is going to be an EIR. So I'm a little concerned about the process. That's my first question. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so yeah, ERC, under our code, the ERC would need to make a decision as to whether to proceed with an EIR and, and review it and EIR. I'll defer to Director Fu as to how that's handled in the contract.
Yeah, as we mentioned in the, so the contract process, councilmember Moore, the EIR is scoped in the contract. We did kind of build, build into that. And that's why we had a slightly different cost and we're looking at cost estimates with other adjacent cities. But it is built in within the contract.
Okay, so I would like to-
Mr. Mayor, if I might add on.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add on. Yes, the EIR is in the contract if we need it, as the director said. And it's also one of the big differentiators between our contract and Los Gatos', in that Los Gatos' EIR is being done as part of their more comprehensive general plan update. So for the housing element specific piece, they only need to do a mitigated negative deck, I believe it was, or initial study. So that, that was a big part of the cost difference between our contracts.
About a minute, about a minute of your time left, councilmember Moore. I'll, I'll go ahead and give you half of my time if you wanted to follow up here.
Okay, thank you. So I would like, Chris, to look over the municipal code and the order for how this went through. The Turner Group came up with a number of 1,300 total market feasible new units for Cupertino from SB9. I would like that to be addressed and whether or not we're going to be getting credit for that number, because that's a pretty significant amount. And I, I have the same concerns about the shareholder group. We have been, we've had, had some negative experience in the past of what I would say were inappropriate individuals in the shareholder group. But I would like to have some discussion about whether or not a developer should be in the shareholder group at all. Is that appropriate or not? And are we going to need to adjust our land use designation map? You're only mentioning the zoning map in that we have three years to rezone, but I'm, I'm wondering about the land use designation. Because we do have, for instance, like a gas station that has a land use designation of commercial residential, which would need cleanup. And I'm, I'm curious about how that goes into play with this process. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. And you only used about half a minute of my time. So I'll go ahead and make a couple of brief comments. I'm supportive of putting the Simian property within this suite of properties that we're considering. I think that it might yield some pretty good results if we were to reach out to property owners affirmatively. Because I know that from the council perspective, it's often just a purely ad hoc basis. You know, people approach us and we get presented various projects, you know, by, by staff or by members of the public. So it might make some sense to, you know, derive a list of significant property owners in the city and, you know, start thinking about how we might be able to reach out in that regard. Another comment that I wanted to make had to do with SB9. I know that this is legislation that affects every, every community in the state, but it would be good to know in terms of those types of communications with the state legislature and the state government, you know, how they're treating this suite of housing legislation, particularly SB9 vis a vis the housing element requirements. So, so those are my comments for now. And yeah, I, I, I think communication with regard to what other jurisdictions are, are doing and seeing is very important. And so, you know, our immediate area has a number of different cities that I think we can, you know, learn, learn quite a bit from. So that might make some sense if we wanted to have some kind of, you know, joint, you know, panel session or a study session within the next few months or so. Okay, I, I see that Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. I leave myself with about a minute left of my original time. Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to follow up? Let me see where you are.
I hope to get my answers, my questions answered regarding the December 9th meeting. And I do have one other comment. So would those two meetings be different from the content we have today? And would those two count towards the allocation we have under the contract? I would like to make sure that we are not repeating the same information for three meetings in a row.
We're not repeating. We're growing. We're growing awareness and education. And we will be also bringing forward the tool that will allow direct democracy for us to understand and gauge from the community what kind of distribution of sites that the community would like to see. And of course, council members can use this site as well. And, and we'll be bringing forward to you the aggregate of that and we'll be doing iterative maps building upon that. So we're starting with the whole of the city and we'll be getting more and more granular as we go and as we learn more.
Okay, but we have only two community meetings planned. And then after the December 9th, when there will be only one meeting left, what are you envisioning the, the next, the, the only one left, the community meeting will be on?
There's about 10 seconds of your remaining time left, Vice Mayor.
I'll, I'll try to be quick. So the tool that we'll be, that we'll be introducing is something that will be iterative. So that while it's only one community meeting-
Okay, that's fine. Current office-only sites, because Apple-
I apologize for this, but I need to divvy timeout fairly here. Councilmember Moore, you did have your hand up, but you lowered it. Did you want to say anything at this point?
Yes, I would. Just quickly, in the, in the report, it mentions that staff will be returning to council in January to present a grant opportunity from ABAG and MTC for an update of the Heart of the City specific plan. It's anticipated that this update will occur concurrently with the housing element update with EMC as the project lead. My concern about that is I, you know, what about the South Deansa special area, other parts of the city? It, this, this statement, this bullet point gives the impression that staff has the intention of upzoning Heart of the City and they're going to be partnered with MTC and ABAG in order to do that and that it's out of our hands. I hope that it just is appearing that way and that's not actually the reality, but I'd, so I'd like to hear a statement about that.
20 seconds. Did anyone from staff or our consultancy group want to speak?
I can, I can help answer that. Early, earlier last year, we applied for a grant with MTC and ABAG for some monies that they were offering to cities. And since we've had a project in our work program related to updating our Heart of the City specific plan, we basically went ahead and applied for that grant and we received the grant. So this is to kind of extend those monies.
Let's get back to, thank you, Pew. And councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. Did you want to? You, you have about a minute and 20 seconds left, councilmember Willie.
So I'd like to pass that to Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, very good. So we do have Vice Mayor Chow with her hand raised. I'll go ahead and seed over my remaining time. Let me check in with councilmember Wei. Councilmember Wei, did you want to say anything else? I note that you were very efficient with your, your comments.
No, I would like to listen to what Pew has to answer with the Vice Mayor Chow's answers.
Okay, that sounds great. So let's go ahead and apply your time to councilmember Moore and Pew, go ahead and conclude your answer. We'll circle back to Vice Mayor Chow. There are a few more minutes left. So let's, let's conclude with those items.
Certainly. So we went ahead and we applied for those grants and as a result of that, MTC and ABAG has a certain, they wish to see this project be approached in a certain way. And so they do require us to have certain aspects that we wish to, that, that would be incorporated into the update to the Heart of the City. And as far as distributing units to other parts of the city, whether that's South Deansa or other parts, we would obviously use our best judgment to come up with the development standards to make sure that if the council does pick sites in those areas of the city, that we would go ahead and implement those standards in those areas. But the Heart of the City is a, is its own special project. So we were going to have EMC do that as well.
Okay, thank you, Pew. Let's circle back to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor, you seem to have a follow-up question to your last question. And so would you like to delve into that at this point? And you'll need to unmute yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councilmember Wei. So I am in the interest of exploring all possibilities. As Cupertino has a significant, significant number of sites that's zoned only for office. And I think Apple has purchased a few properties recently. I wonder if we should also reach out to site owners of sites that's zoned office only to see if they might have an interest of developing residential units as, for example, Google has done.
That is certainly on our radar as well, Vice Mayor Chow.
Great. Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone. I think this was, I see Ms. Larson, Interstate City Manager Larson has his hand raised. Did you want to make some concluding comments, Greg?
Correct. Just quickly, I wanted to share a screen that was in the supplemental report that went to council late yesterday based on the questions received. And it shows the full schedule for this project, including when all of the public and community and stakeholder meetings will be, the location of the icons in each month, give you an approximation that we're zeroing in on to get facilities booked in light of the COVID pandemic. I will say that at least the second community meeting is far enough out that hopefully the current restrictions on mask mandates and in-person meetings and protocol management will allow at least, you know, some of the meetings in 2022 to be hybrid or public. And we think that's the best way to get full community participation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Greg. It sounds like we have a good start to our discussion. Thank you very much to members of the public. Thank you for keeping it civil and issues-based. You know, and I, I can't, I, I can't help but close by saying that none of the members on our council right now were members when the comments that a member of the public was referring to were, were made. I actually started on our council right at the beginning of our, you know, current housing element. But that, that was literally at the very beginning of the term and, you know, those comments were, were made previously. And I don't think that represents the, the sentiment of the community or our council at this point. So thanks very much. Let's go on to item number two under the study session. That's consideration of a climate action plan update and draft measures relating there too. I see Andre Devort and Gillie Corral here. Welcome to our staff members. And I know that Greg, you wanted to go ahead and give a brief preface to this item as well. But I see your cameras off and so maybe I'll just jump over to, no, okay, so wait. Okay, well, great. Andre, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks so much for taking the time for us on your busy agenda. So the last time we discussed the Climate Action Plan at the council level was in December of 2020. Since then, we've been very active in a lot of work, both technical and in public engagement to carry forward with the council's direction to develop a roadmap toward a climate-neutral city by the year 2040 or earlier. So with us today, we have Gillie Corral, our Climate Utilities Analyst, who'll go through a brief presentation. We'll try to touch on a few topics today, a very brief status update. And then main focus of today's conversation is to solicit your feedback and public feedback on the draft list of high-impact measures that the team has come up with throughout the, throughout the year. Also, we have with us a team from representing our consulting company, Rincon Consultants. So they have extensive experience with CAP development. They were chosen as part of a competitive process earlier this year, and they've been instrumental in helping us to develop the technical work that we'll present to you today. So with the consulting team, we have Kelsey Bennett, our project manager. We have Alyssa Jared, who's responsible for the modeling process that has produced the results that are described in our staff report, as well as Eric Feldman, the principal with Rincon Consultants. So I won't take up any more time. I'll hand it over to Gillie Corral, who will go through a presentation. And then I'll help play traffic control with questions and direct those to the appropriate folks during the discussion. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Gillie Corral, Climate and Utilities Analyst. As Andre mentioned at the December 2020 meeting, the council directed staff to set goals that would achieve carbon neutrality for municipal facilities by 2030, a zero-waste community by 2035, and carbon-neutral city by 2040. As you can see from this timeline, we're about halfway through the process of developing the Climate Action Plan. And we currently have our second survey still open through Sunday. If folks listening in want to provide input on the survey, they can go to Cupertino.org/climaction. As you can see from the timeline as well, the technical process and engagement process inform one another and will continue to run concurrently throughout the Climate Action Plan update process. I'll mention as well, last month, the commission, the Sustainability Commission, recommended the set of draft high-impact measures list that we will be presenting tonight to this council. This is our carbon reduction path with council's mid- and long-term targets embedded in the graph. All of the Climate Action Plan measures that we'll be discussing today need to get us from that larger bar, which is roughly 360,000 metric tons of carbon emissions per year to that midpoint target of 2030, which is approximately 200,000 metric tons, to almost zero emissions by 2040. We know that in order to achieve the city's carbon neutrality targets, there are key measures the city must take. This is the big list. It's the same high-impact measures list that were included in your staff report that we are seeking your feedback on tonight. I think of these as major levers in a system. Any adjustments to these high-impact measures will change how fast and how well we achieve our targets. So the project team is asking for feedback today, since any changes will need, will, will necessarily affect the overarching goals of the CAP. You may see it's ordered a bit differently on the screen in front of you than in the staff report. I've ordered it here from, from highest to lowest greenhouse gas emissions reduction impact. However, collectively, these are all considered high-impact measures in that if we achieve all of them, we will nearly reach all of the carbon reduction necessary to reach our 2040 carbon neutrality goal. And together, these measures shape the roadmap to carbon neutrality and zero waste as a community. So we can revisit this slide during the discussion. So we can revisit this slide during the discussion, but I'm also going to go through these quickly, sector by sector. In the building sector, we're going to transition from natural gas to all-electric appliances and support our clean electricity provider of previously mentioned Silicon Valley Clean Energy in expanding its customer base. By 2030, we'll need to ensure that half of the energy used to power homes is from clean electricity and up to 86% by 2040. In the commercial sector, about 24% of energy used by businesses will need to be, needs to be electric by 2030, and about half by 2040. In the transportation sector, we'll need to change the way we power our cars and trucks to cleaner fuels and make biking, walking, and shared transit the most popular way to get around Cupertino. In about 10 years, roughly half of our trips in town will need to be made by biking, public transit, and shared transit. And we'll have to increase the electric or hybrid passenger vehicles up to 35% of all cars by 2030. For context, that percentage is 5% today. Zero waste is generally defined as 90%, 90% diversion of waste from the landfill. To achieve our emissions reduction goals, we'll have to make sure that 80% of organic, such as food scraps and yard waste, is diverted from the landfill by 2030. And nearly all organic waste must be diverted by 2040. We will also need to divert 35% of our inorganic waste from landfill by 2030, and again, almost all of it by 2040. I'll note as well that these high-impact waste measures you see on the screen are pegged to meet the carbon neutrality goal of 2030, excuse me, 2040. When developing the timing for the actions in the climate action plan, we will also ensure we time them to meet the council's zero-waste goal by 2035. Over the next decade, we'll have to electrify about a quarter of off-road machinery and equipment, such as construction machinery, and move to 100% electric off-road equipment by 2040. Just last month, Governor Newsom signed AB 1346 to begin phasing out the sale of new gasoline-powered small off-road engines. And this will help us locally to achieve this measure. Part of reducing our carbon footprint as a community is creating ways to absorb pollution. And one of the most impactful ways we can do this locally is to plant more trees. Over the next decade, we'll need to double the tree canopy to sequester more carbon from the atmosphere. Trees also provide shade and improve the air quality, which will help our community to be more resilient when facing heat waves and other climate hazards. At this time, we request council feedback on these high-impact draft measures. In these next steps, we will continue, continue to conduct community outreach to determine which actions will underfill each of these high-impact measures. As we pull all of this together into a draft plan, we will continue outreach with the community through workshops and Sustainability Commission meetings. Our team is aiming for May to present the draft climate action plan to council for approval. Our project team is here for questions. And our consultant Rincon is available to answer any questions specifically on the measures and how and why they are developed. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thanks, Gilli. Thanks, Andre. Greatly appreciate that presentation. And timing-wise, we have about 20, 25, maybe even 30 minutes for this remaining. Let's go to the members of the public who would like to make a few statements. I do see a number of hands raised now, eight hands raised. And so let me try to be fair to everyone, but also ask that we be concise. We only have, at the most, 30 minutes between now and when we can, you know, start our, our regular meeting, which we should start at 6:45 as scheduled. And so let me go ahead and read off the names that I have here. Paul Soto, Tuft from Jerry Liu, Juliana Pendleton, Sean Hughes, Connie Cunningham, Tara Sri Krishnan, Jennifer Griffin, Peggy Griffin, Lisa Warren, and Eugene Lin, as well as Bruce Nagel. And again, I ask everyone to be concise. If we get into this and, you know, we seem to be running out of time, I, I will unfortunately need to either abbreviate the amount of time or, you know, cut it off at a certain point. But our first speaker is Paul, and welcome, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and members of the council. My name is Paul Soto, and I'm from the Horseshoe, the Gardner area of San Jose. Resident of Santa Clara County for six generations and a California-registered Mission Native. My comments are around equity and being able to really articulate that in a legal sense, that there is a legal definition for the word equity. In San Jose, what's going to happen is we're going to have to use subsidies. We're talking about subsidies now, because once all of the homes are, are geared for electric, that's going to add to the cost. Now, the, the homeowners are going to be able to have rebates, but we're talking about the renters. And so the renters are vulnerable. And there's historical deprivations that have happened as a result of these redlining maps that really need to take precedent in regard to these conversations. Because if there's, if it's not, and then we're talking about equity, we're really not meeting the need, because we've never accepted how these kinds of economic and social deficits were created. And, and so if we're not looking at the source of the issue and the problem, which is those redlining maps, then we're not going to really get at any viable solution to what's going to eventually happen in the future.
Paul, let me, let me just ask the audio and video to pause, it's Paul's time right now. Paul, I'm going to ask that you wrap up within about 20 seconds. And I'll be cutting the time down to two minutes for your speaker. I, I appreciate your understanding on this. I'm just looking at the list here, and it, it looks, you know, fairly extensive. And we want to be able to provide adequate time for, for council comments at the end, too. Thanks very much for your understanding. So please proceed. Paul, please proceed.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you. So in summation, that having a, having an objective definition for equity, would, you would have to delve into how inequitable things have been. Once you do that, then you'll be able to get a, a, an objective definition for equity and then apply that to your policy. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Paul. Our next speaker is Juliana Pendleton, and thank you, video, for resetting that to two minutes. Juliana, and our remainder, remaining speakers, you'll have two minutes. They are, as read off previously, with the additional dash of leads. Welcome, Juliana.
Good evening. My name is Juliana Pendleton, and I am the Environmental Advocacy Assistant for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. We greatly appreciate the inclusion of a tree canopy goal within the CAP 2.0. Nature-based solutions are important steps forward for climate resiliency and protecting biodiversity. We also greatly appreciated the robust discussions around biodiversity during the Sustainability Commission meeting on this topic. Planting 24,000 new trees and developing an urban forestry management plan provide critical opportunities to expand native plants in our community. We ask that 80% of the trees planted be native. We strongly believe that biodiversity should be a goal in itself and that this goal can include increasing the plantings of trees and shrubs and enhancing biodiversity. We ask to please adopt a biodiversity goal and create an urban forest with a healthy understory to promote biodiversity and community well-being. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Juliana, and thank you for, for being brief. Our next speaker is Sean Hughes. Welcome, Sean.
Hello.
Yes, hello.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't sure if you could hear me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. And I just want to say, I really appreciate all the outreach efforts and the process so far in this update. It has been refreshing and very transparent, and I appreciate all the information. At a high level, I just really hope that the council places a lot of time and energy in reviewing these proposed measures and in particular, places more emphasis on the highest-impact measures if, if they are not adopting all of the measures to proportionally attack those, like, highest emphasis ones, and those ones being increased transit, commercial zero-emission vehicle adoption, and residential electrification building targets. And sorry, Gilli, I know I reversed the residential electrification one. I think that's second. And yeah, just again, would really hope that the council endorses many of these recommendations and pursues them to their fullest. So, and would also love to second Soto's comments around equity and the need for incorporation around that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Oh, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Connie Cunningham, 34-year resident and Audubon Society member. I thank the city council for including climate action plan in the city work program. Our city recognizes the real importance of climate change. Quoting environmental advocates, protecting biodiversity and climate action plans are equally urgent pillars. They are synergistic. These efforts work together and produce a greater effect than each working alone. In concert with three environmental advocate organizations, the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, Green Foothills, and Santa Clara Valley Chapter of the California Native Plant Society, I urge the city to plant 80% Californian native trees and to utilize native shrubs and grasses to support biodiversity, including butterflies and birds. Please add this metric to Measure CS1 and CS2 in Attachment A. I also support the goal of equity in this CAP 2.0 plan. Cupertino must ensure that native trees are included in all areas of the city with special attention for parcels and census block groups that do not currently have trees. Equity is key to ensuring that Cupertino is a viable city for everyone. Plantable space information can be overlaid, overlaid with land use and zoning information, because much of the land with areas suitable for planting are privately owned. Just some examples of what we have in order to do this is road medians where trees can be planted, the Memorial Park improvements in the specific plan design, Lawrence Midi, the new park that's going on the east side of the city, and that we have so many citizens interested in gardens, native and wildlife, that can be brought into the planning. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Connie. Our next speaker is Tara Sri Krishnan, followed by Jerry Liu. I noticed that Jerry had put his hand down and put it back up. And so he, he originally was second, so we'll put that speaker after Tara. Welcome, Tara.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to briefly hop on to echo some of the sentiments from our local students you may have received through email public comment. And also, as a new member of our county Board of Education representing this trustee area, I know today's discussion's about the city's climate action plan, but I just want to touch on some parallel efforts that are going on to scale up climate action in our education sector. And I wanted to express the importance of engaging our schools and our students whenever possible and whenever opportunities may arise in your climate action efforts, especially because the city has shown a lot of leadership on this. And I'm so happy to see how the city has already been making a seat at the table for our students in these important conversations around sustainability and environmental leadership, including through engaging the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team. Because regardless of whatever career or future aspirations our students may have, the reality is the climate emergency will be a central aspect of their lives. And I would go as far as to say climate change will be the defining feature of their lives. So that's why it's so important that our students have access and exposure to not only environmental education in the classroom, but also to opportunities that will empower them to lead in impacting environmental policies and that can start early on even at their own school campus. And I know many of our schools are looking at possible cooperative links to CBOs and partners to provide some of these opportunities. So again, just wanted to highlight some parallel efforts, and thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, Tara. Our next speaker is Jerry Liu. Welcome, Jerry.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Sarah Liu, and I am a sophomore at Mona Vista High School. I am here today to represent the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team, which Tara just mentioned. San Jose has recently set a goal of carbon neutrality by 2030. We encourage the council to press for a goal that is more aggressive than the current draft goal of 2040, to be similar to San Jose's goal, as our team has been focused on reducing unnecessary water use and food waste at our schools. We would also be interested in seeing the development of climate action plans for school districts. Again, I would like to urge this council for the strongest possible greenhouse gas reduction goal, which I believe is carbon neutrality by 2030. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, this is Jennifer Griffin. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Sound check. Yes, okay. Thank you for having this workshop. Sustainability is very, very important. But before we get too carried away with this in terms of the tree canopy, I sent an email to city council members. If SB 9 and SB 10 are implemented, every lot in Cupertino can be subdivided into four to 10 units. Every inch of the lot, except for the public right-of-way, will be four feet from the property line. You will have a complete concrete jungle. There will be no room to plant any trees of any size in a four-foot setback, and you cannot plant them in PG&E, you can't plant a big tree under PG&E power lines. I, I think that this, yes, it's a good idea to have, to increase tree canopy, but it's kind of a quote, feel-good thing when you have housing bills, such as 9 and 10, that are going to so completely devastate the tree canopy in Cupertino. I predict that if 9 and 10, as of January 1st, we're going to have private trees cut down on every residential lot in this city. We are going to lose 50% of our tree canopy, and they will be trying to cut driveways through the public right-of-way and our street trees. We've got some in my neighborhood that are very old. You're going to be having people cutting the roots in the public right-of-way. This is why the housing bills collide. They destroy the sustainability. I predict complete disaster. We need to get Sacramento on board that they are killing our trees in California with these housing bills. They don't get it, but we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council, staff, and consultants. Thank you for addressing climate change. There are many good ideas, but many have significant impacts on our businesses and our residents. You need to present these possible impacts to them directly. This is buried in the climate change, and my guess is nobody's looking at it, which is sad. The staff report in the tables, it needs to show the current numbers. How do you come up with percentages to increase without knowing where you are, you are currently? In Attachment A, equity, throughout the document, remove of color from the phrase "low-income community of color", because low income has no color. If you're low income, you can't afford it, and it doesn't matter what color you are. Climate action applies to everybody. Page two, Measure BE-1, funding. It should include rebates to residents, not just commercial buildings. I don't understand neighborhood-level electrification and basically what it means and what the impacts to residents are. Parking, throughout the document, do not reduce parking. With today's state housing laws coming down on us, parking will be limited anyway. Page five, Measure T2, partnerships. Remove specifically listing walk-by Cupertino. This elevates one organization over all others. The Bike Ped Commission is chartered to handle this issue, and all organizations have equal access to them. Page five, Measure T3. Is it, is it time?
10 seconds left, Peggy.
Okay. Um, anyway, wait. Okay. Um, anyway, waste, I've sent you an email, roofs require lighter colors, water add requirements for permio, driveways, hardscapes, and I forgot to add parking lots.
Thank you, Peggy.
Please look at my email. Thank you.
Will do. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Once again, I follow Peggy and once again, amen to her. And Peggy, can you please send me that email? Because many, most, well, all of your points were points that I had hoped to have time to get to, only I'm not as swift as you in speaking. I am concerned about, we'll have a question about the, the tree canopy. Of course, we need more trees. That's a benefit in so many ways to offset the carbon footprint and, and so many other things for mental health, yada, yada. But does this goal that's here, which seems lofty, but important, but does it even take into account, as was mentioned by Jennifer too, um, the analysis of what state housing bills and density up sending is going to do? And all the trees we're going to lose, we already lose. We have developers come in, commercial development and, and say they're going to save all the trees and then they get down the road, oh, suddenly they're diseased. Suddenly they have to remove them for utilities. Suddenly half the trees are gone. And I know they replace them, but a small 24-inch box tree is not a replacement for a 40-year-old canopy. So that's one thing. I also noticed this, this definition, I guess, yes, the definition of equity saying low-income communities of color and I, my jaw dropped. Again, agree with Peggy, take that of color out. What does it have to do with anything? And, and people are going to take that wrong probably, but in this instance, it should not be there. Okay. But you know, I, I'm looking at this blur of 14 pages in front of me with colors and I never got through all of it. So that's probably really all I have to comment on now, but again, I'm hoping Peggy will share her email with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Our next speaker is Eugene Lin. Welcome, Eugene.
Hello, everyone. I'm a 30-year resident of Cupertino. I appreciate the city's work on the climate action plan. I just wanted to echo some comments from, echo the comments from Juliana and Connie on the importance of using native trees in the tree canopy goal. Native trees support biodiversity while non-native trees can actually harm biodiversity. And so I think one of the key reasons why native trees are important as we think about the tree canopy goals is that, you know, a lot of the native species of birds and insects and animals, they've co-evolved over thousands of years with these native trees. And so they're uniquely, they're uniquely adapted to these types of trees. And so if you bring, you know, non-native trees, they may not actually be well-suited for these different species. And, and these trees are sources of food and shelter. So I think it's really important that we have a plan to try to stay with native trees. And additionally, native trees are, you know, they're better adapted to the local climate and possibly better adapted to deal with local pests. So I would be in support of the 80% native tree kind of benchmark that Juliana and Connie mentioned, as well as some sort of biodiversity metric to see how, to, to really maximize the biodiversity that the trees are providing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eugene. Our next speaker is Bruce Nagel. Welcome, Bruce.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. I wanted to, to thank you for the opportunity to speak. There's also, I spent, saw a lot of time was spent in, in terms of putting the presentation together of the survey. And I think that that's good that you did an outreach to all the citizens to address this. And if you're doing more, that's even better. One other, couple of other things is, is that first off, we talked about equity. That's an important issue. And I think you probably need to get to some quantified way of doing it. And I'll point you to two possible sources. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District has recently put out a position paper in terms of putting in all electric appliances after 2027, 2029 and 2031. And they've defined equity there as has the Climate Smart Plan from San Jose. So I would suggest that you look at those in terms of equity as you start to formulate your, your problems or your, your solutions for this. And, and I guess the last thing I'll mention is, is as you're going through this, it's, you know, the fact that you're dealing with transportation, that's an important issue. It's an important issue to make sure that, that the things that you extend to the upper end of the housing also goes to lower end. I mean, if you have very low income housing, then you want to make sure that things like car chargers are in there and that the, they're fully electric so that you don't deprive the lowest of the people in your community to not having a, a fully sustainable home. Thank you again for the chance to speak.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Our next and final speaker is Dashil Leeds. Welcome, Dashil.
Hello, my name is Dashil Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Lomar Piedra Chapter. I'd like to echo Juliana's comments from the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Our chapter is in support of increased biodiversity, particularly the 80% metric for native trees. I'd also like to echo Sarah's comments from the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team for the council to further strengthen the current greenhouse gas reduction target. We do hope you explore a stronger target and see what measures would need to be accelerated or possibly added to reach a stronger goal, possibly of carbon neutrality by 2035 or even 2030, as San Jose has just announced. We strongly support the included measures for existing residential and commercial building decarbonization. And regarding existing buildings, we think there's room for Cupertino to lead the way in decarbonizing its own municipal infrastructure. And this is a key equity issue. As you explore the electrification of existing buildings, we hope you consider renter protections and anti-displacement protections for renters, as well as exploring as many rebates as possible. And this can be done through exploring partnerships. San Jose is going to be exploring carbon neutrality. A lot of other cities in the county are going to be exploring the electrification of existing buildings as well. The County Office of Sustainability is looking to get more involved in local cities. We know Silicon Valley Clean Energy is ramping up its own actions and there could be additional funding and action available at the state and federal level. So there's a lot going on here and I think the future is looking bright for building decarbonization. And this is really important because for as long as these gas pipelines exist underground, they're going to be leaking methane into the atmosphere. And furthermore, gas appliances cause numerous indoor health negative effects from indoor air pollution. So we really have to be sure that as we decarbonize, that we prioritize low-income people and make sure that we can decarbonize their buildings equitably. So thank you so much and we really support this climate action plan.
Thank you very much, Dashil.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Pardon me. I'm, uh, Tara Shrikrishnan also forwarded three emails on behalf of students. I can read those with your permission or I can include them in the public record.
Uh, let's go ahead and include those in the public record, given our time constraints at this time. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So let's go ahead and bring this back to City Council with a reminder that our regular meeting starts in just about 10 minutes. What I'd like to encourage everyone to do, because of course this item is going to come back to us later in the year as we start to look into more of the details of the climate action plan. I'd like to encourage everyone to try to encapsulate their comments at this point to about a minute or so. I apologize for that, but I think the first step was really fruitful in terms of hearing from the public, yeah, as well as of course from our, our staff and our outside consultants. So would anyone on council like to step up to that challenge to provide some encapsulated comments at this point in, in a minute or so? And if not, I'll go ahead and, and start us off. I, I want to go ahead and thank the members of the public and our, our student community for coming out and speaking on this. I fully support the idea of climate action plans for school districts. I think that is an excellent idea. I, I think it's not just an excellent idea, it's probably an imperative with regard to this particular problem. And the other part of it is, a, a, as the representative of our five West Valley cities on our Valley Transportation Authority, I think that it's particularly important in our West Valley and in Cupertino in particular, to start thinking about public transit. I know that it is something that triggers a lot of concerns with regard to removal of land use authority and, you know, things that are going on at the state level, but public transit is just such an important element of our equation. We have been doing what we can to help service our residents through our Via Shuttle program. I looked on Via Shuttle's, Via's website recently and I saw that they have an electrification program. I'm highly encouraging of that. I think we need to expand that out to other cities as well. But I think we also need to work with VTA and the other transit agencies to see what we can do. You know, if not down Stevens Creek Corridor, I know that's been, you know, an issue in the past. Perhaps even on 280, Highway 85 has $350 million of Measure B money earmarked for it. So, you know, these are things that are very important and I think that as an initial matter, I'd like to make that statement. Okay, all five of us, all, all four of the remainder of council have their hands raised in the order of Vice Mayor Chow, Council Member Wei, Council Member Willie, and then Council Member Moore. Vice Mayor Chow.
Support tree canopy and biodiversity and 80% of native trees, assuming that it will provide the same level of carbon sequestration level and municipal call to protect all trees so that we don't lose existing canopy under development. And I'd like to see rebate for residential buildings for our residents and engagement for under every item should in, engage all residents who will be impacted by that item and especially those on fixed income such as seniors. And, and support broader equity goals, not all, not only socioeconomic equity, but also geological equity between different areas of Cupertino and equity between people with different ethnic backgrounds. And also I'd like to point out, I think the goal will be 100% zero emission vehicle by 2040. That's actually achievable goal. Then I don't know why, I mean, transit is very important. Bicycle is very important. However, given we will have all zero emission vehicle, they don't really reduce emission under climate action plan. So I want that they are at least like outdated goal for climate action. So the staff should reexamine their goals and whether there is 28% reduction has to come from right here at transit, then we have to really examine, can we reach that goal? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I'm giving everyone an extra 20 seconds or so since I did go over a bit. Council Member Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, I just want to echo what Mayor Paul and Vice Mayor has said. You know, the, the, the green, the canopy, I think that suggestion is really great. And then we have very good goals. And then I, I, we received quite a few comments about whether if we could expedite a little bit, maybe 2030 to move to 2026, 2040 move to 2036. So I think that's for our staff and the Sustainability Commission to think about it. And I agree with the school district and we really need to, our young people to lead. So, you know, we have great plans, so I'm going to make more comments. We can always, you know, work on it next time and then we can email comments to our staff, but we have great community involvement. So I'm very proud of our city and our residents.
Thank you, Council Member Wei. Actually, we have Council Member Willie.
Yeah, so I, I agree. We, we really need a very aggressive plan. It's going to be so much more effective to be proactive than to be reactive as climate change, you know, gets worse and worse. With that, automobiles, you know, are really a, a way of life for everybody at this point. I'd like to see us get more EVs. Maybe every house gets an EV. What would prevent people from getting an EV? Well, if you're buying a car and you have a choice, electric or used EV, but you need a house charging. So I would really hope we can come up with some type of a program to help EV chargers at residential houses so that then people don't need to worry about that problem. Go out and get the car and an EV works. So if staff can help come up with some type of program, maybe get some grant money from the state that we can channel to residential. So I'll leave it at that for today. Thanks.
Great. Thanks so much, Council Member Willie. And next and finally, we have Council Member Moore.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mayor Paul. I, I think looking at the 80% native trees suggestion that we need to review that more thoroughly. For instance, the Oregon ash is native. However, it lives on essentially riverbanks. It needs a damp climate. And so not, not every native tree is appropriate to the local area and the Oregon ash has been planted pretty, pretty extensively around here. So I think we should be looking at climate appropriate trees and studying it in more depth so that we can, can make an appropriate impact. I'm also concerned about the tree list which we have currently. And if there's some way we can do something right now, it is to update that list and remove the southern magnolia off of it. That is a tree which is native only as far west as east Texas and it requires a lot of water, yet it's on our tree list. And we could make that change immediately, strike it off of the list and, and, and get going. And go through the street trees, which have been cut down in public right of way throughout the years and have, make sure that each one of those are replaced, the ones that are, were required when developments went into, to begin with. And I have some more, more comments around equity. I think that we need to have a, a real definition about that. And those, the terminology at the start, have a list of definitions so that we all are on the same page and, and, and in agreement. Thank you. But it's a very exciting document and I'm really glad that we're moving ahead with this.
Agreed. And I, I hope that staff can hear that the community and our council are very much behind these efforts. And we thank you as well as our outside consultants for every ounce of energy that you've put into this. And so with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and we'll reconvene in approximately three minutes at a regularly scheduled time of 6:45 PM for our regular council meeting. We'll see you then. Thanks.